Order is six oh four. I am two point oh old business. We have a discussion to review the requests for proposals received in regards to superintendent search. We have two of them and we can go through them or we can just discuss them. I'll just go up to the floor and start discussion.
They're both at the same price. The second one by Martin lists schools in our area that have used her services and it seems to me that, it seems to me that the only way to assess whether you get any money's worth, whether, because it's fifteen thousand dollars plus, the only way to go about this is to, is to talk to the schools that have used an executive or discounted a search and see whether they believe that it was worth the money since we know that Bosse can do it for nothing. So, and, and we knew it wasn't going to be free, so the question is, do you get that kind of value?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Harry that, you know, if you get that kind of information. I've talked to a couple of people that are, you know, in other school systems that are dealing with stuff and one of the things that they've said is, for example, there's, there's a couple of, you know, superintendents and our principals right now in the area that if they were contacted by one of these firms and things would get quiet, they would be considering it would be interested in this position. They feel it's suicide for them to mention to Bosse's or anybody that they're interested in and it becomes kind of out of it that they're looking for another job, that their tenure where they are would be, would be put at risk. That's a huge difference, which before we got into this, before we had the workshop, I never even understood. But the thing that there's some really good candidates who were not going to get through the Bosse's process, and I understand why there's a difference, but there is an impact when, when I need to admit to my board and my school that they're interested in looking for other jobs and they, they don't feel comfortable doing that at that point in time. So, again, it's an interesting dynamic and I think as Harry says, one of the ways that we can try to figure out whether that perceived benefit is a value is talk to people that have done it. Otherwise, we're guessing. The other thing I just want to say, I was just totally unrelated to that, but one of the things that I've said repeatedly, and it seems like we keep going down this road of a search, is, and I'm not sure how we evaluate it, but it seems to be that we're very administratively heavy for a school this size. To have a full-time special ed person, to have a full-time tech person, to have two principals and a superintendent for a five-person school seems out of line. And that we could possibly get through this process without even hiring a superintendent or hiring a superintendent that would be a condensed version looking for something different. That would be a different job description. And then, and we've talked about that before, but I don't know if we've ever actually do study, if we've looked into how to make that happen, is that a viable option?
I sort of remember from the workshop and Jackie, and I want to make sure I say it correctly, I, I believe that Jackie said you need to have superintendent.
Right. It could be a superintendent that has the responsibilities of superintendent and principal.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Or it could be a superintendent who have one principal rather than two.
Okay.
From the history we have and the improvements we've made, I don't want to touch what we've done with tech and special ed. I think the reason that we have people focused on that is exactly where we need to be, but because we didn't have that in the past, that put a burden on principals that now has been relieved somewhat from these other, these other people. Does that then give us the opportunity to reduce our administrative load from two principals and a superintendent to one principal and one superintendent? I think it does, but...
So, you're not talking about a shared superintendent, you're talking about one principal and one superintendent?
Right, right.
I know when we did the last search, the, the concept of a shared superintendent was discussed and, and essentially somebody finally said, you want your superintendent to be focused on you, you don't want them to have a split attention. And so, that's not, I mean, that's, that's...
Especially in crisis, I don't want someone having to split between, like Morris said, because of that. And us, I, I want them to laser-focused here.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, that's it.
What I, what I think we could accomplish that with a reduction in administrative staff, I think it could still keep the level. Again, the difference in the last couple of years, we increased these other administrative positions. We increased the impact they have and the responsibilities they have. That should theoretically, I'm sure if I was sitting in the chair, I may have said that, that should theoretically reduce the load on those principals. And it would seem that we should be able to do it with, with one fewer of each.
Going back to the idea of what we get with the private search firm versus Bosse's and the fact that it's private, people feel more comfortable with the private piece or some could. Is there a way that we can look to Bosse's to make that piece a stronger piece that has to be taken into consideration?
Well, I think we, I think the board determines the kind of search that you ask someone to execute for you.
But, but the Bosse's superintendent...
It's much more of an open search.
They, well, but it, it's just by nature.
Yes.
Because of, they would be, you know, interacting with the Bosse superintendent who then oversees all of those districts. By nature, the risk of someone knowing, I, I don't think you can mask it anymore just because of who you'd be interacting with, but it's, I mean, it's a question you could ask, but I just don't know if you can.
And the other difference, which again, I had thought of before, but this, these people in these other districts are telling me, the real difference is these firms know different people out there that are good, that aren't even necessarily looking right now, even thinking, but all of a sudden the search firm comes and says to them, have you considered a superintendent position? I mean, because when you're really good and you're doing your job, you're busy doing your job. Bosse's can't do that, just in nature, but they can't go cherry picking from another district and try to...
And they won't.
And they won't, nor should they. I mean, that's not their place. But could one of these firms go to, I'm just going to throw out a school district, Richfield Springs, and say, hey, you really turned this place around, you're doing some good things here, have you considered taking a bigger step? They can do that and they do do that. They go after people and convince them that this is a, is a position that you may want to consider. That's something Bosse's cannot and would not do.
And these are all the reasons we even entertained this in the first place, given what we knew was going to be a price tag, but didn't know what the price tag was going to be.
Yeah, I was a little surprised with the price tag, although we had kind of talked about what it was, but I still thought it was, I don't know.
It's still a startling number.
I guess, I guess just seeing it on paper made it a little bit more startling.
Yeah.
I guess I wasn't that surprised.
I wasn't surprised at all.
It's a startling number and a hard pill to swallow and the nebulous plus mileage and, and printing and expenses is disconcerting.
Because I don't believe that that includes advertising.
Uh, I think that's the expenses. I think that's, I think that's part of it, yeah, I do think that that's part of it. But, I mean, one of the reasons I was interested to play this out, in addition to all the reasons that Paul has talked about, that we talked about at that workshop, is that frankly, the last time we went through this, there was an unbelievable amount of negative feedback about Bosse's, about a distrust of Bosse's that I believe was coming from within the building, that this, there was this distrust of Bosse's, that Bosse's was forcing this, that Bosse's was guiding this, that Bosse's was, and, and, I mean, to go from one distrustful search to a, you know, distrustful event to distrustful event to another distrustful event, and now we're back at, one of the reasons I was most interested in at least looking at this, while I have a hard time swallowing the pill, is knowing that we have at least fleshed out what we can and making sure that at least everybody on these seats is comfortable with Bosse's, which I was more than comfortable with Bosse's. I didn't think that any of the concerns existed, but with the amount of distrust that is circulating, we need to talk about it. We need to know.
It didn't cost us anything to do that.
It cost us a little time. Um, what we're getting into or what we're not getting into and what all of the positives and negatives of that are. Okay. I mean, I have to agree, I think my first thought, seeing this list of schools, Rome City Schools, Fayetteville Manlius, Lafayette, looking at that list of local schools, if I was curious to talk to them about why. Why did they choose this? Had they had failed Bosse's search and they decided to do this? Did they have another reason to do this? Why did they choose to do it? And, and again, was it worth their money? What did they feel like they got out of it?
And without asking them, I mean, we're, we're guessing if this benefit, well, and put it in very commercial terms, otherwise we're guessing that the benefits of these people who get paid to do this are telling us how it's going to help them, that that's worth the value. And, you know, I never trust the salesman to, to talk me the truth, but trying to keep close and close to you, I get it. But let's find out from where these places were. What led them to do it? Did they feel that it, that it helped them through the process? Do they feel, most importantly to me, because the number one concern, when all is said and done, we want the best person we can get, we want the best group of candidates we can get. Do they feel that this made that happen? That to me is the biggest question. Did they get the best candidates they felt possible by spending the money for the firm? And if they did, you know, and we spent money on other things that we thought, I mean, Harry was saying a lot about to me, you know, we spent twenty something thousand dollars on a strategic plan, we could have done internally and housed on our own. We did it because we thought it was a value and that we got value for that money spent. Is that not the same argument with this? If these schools tell us that it made a difference.
Okay. So, so I, we haven't even talked about the second one and I have to admit that the second one, I was just less interested in because they had not worked in this area where, where that, that first one, really, all of the schools that they had worked with were really locally in this area. I mean, their, their RFPs are almost identical unless, I miss something.
Unless you look, well, unless you look at the, the schools they've conducted searches for.
If I remember correctly, because I didn't put that part out, so I'm on the paper. The schools that they listed...
The second one?
Yeah. All those are farther away than New York. There were others that seemed smaller.
Similar to more schools, these are bigger schools.
These seem to be larger schools. So, yes, they're farther away, but the makeup of the schools, some of them, if I remember correctly, seem more similar to us.
Yeah, we have Solon West, Central School District, Allenany, Lionstone, Amherst, Watkinsland, and...
Yeah, I mean, Watkinsland, very similar.
Yeah, yeah, it's only, there are only two of them. If, if we go this route, we're going to, we're going to interview both. But right now, it's a, it's a matter of...
Whatever, you know, if we were going to contact schools, I mean...
Sure. There's no point in cutting one of these off. Right. So, so it sounds like, what I'm hearing you all say is that you would like to explore these RFPs further and potentially contact some of the, of the, of the, the references, yeah, the references basically that they've given, that they've given for project searches before. So, I guess then there would, you'll, you'll, you'd have to make that motion and then we'd have to move forward with it and set a date and decide and sort of divvy up, whoops, or the...
It's still...
Divvy up the work, exactly.
Um, two things. I'm going to set one first. I think somebody should take it all on, just all the references, so you're asking the same question the same way, understanding it all and then bring it back to all of us. I could be wrong, but I just, I hear things a lot differently than others. So, if, if we're trying to get a good idea of the answer to these six questions we're going to ask these schools, I think it'd be better to have one person do it. That's just a thought. I forgot the first one, so I'll come back to that.
Well, I mean, is, would it be possible to set up stacked Skype appointments so that we could all be there and hear it?
Yeah.
Because to your point of view, you hear things differently.
Yeah, I, I would want at least two of us listening and taking notes to anything.
I don't want this process to take a long time.
No.
That's the other part. And I don't, and I don't think that by saying that we want to contact the references, we're saying that we want to go with these companies over Bosse's. I think that's really important, that that's good, we just want to understand what it actually gave them, because we can't tell from this.
Okay.
But I don't think it should take us long and I don't, because if we're going to start with either one, Bosse's or one of these two companies, I think we need to get moving.
Okay.
So, it sounds like we're tamed it, we don't need to do a motion, we just table a discussion?
Yeah.
Still discussion.
All right. Can we, before we finish the topic, can we figure out who and when?
Sort of a theory of when.
You know me, gotta have my schedule.
My schedule.
Do, would we want to talk about what questions we want?
I mean, this is the only place we can do that.
Right, exactly.
Well, this is our chance, so I think yes.
That's what I think, I mean...
I mean, I, I think the questions are fairly simple and not even that many of them. I think, and there's more to our base, this is not an interview with a yes or no question. It's, you know, why did you choose to use, we don't yet get into the specific companies, why did you choose to use, you know, one of these companies as opposed to your Bosse's? Do you feel it added value to the process and in what ways? I mean, I think that's all we really want to do, that's what we're trying to get at.
I want to know what the plus was.
In reminders.
Well, no, I mean the fifteen thousand plus.
Although, but there are three other reminders, since I'm not saying that there are.
No, no, but I, yeah, no, I meant cost.
No, money, financials.
I meant cost.
But I, but I think it's the, the cost wise, I would say, but also we want to know what kind of scheme, you know, because when they got into it, I mean, obviously these guys are going to tell you, well, some people felt this one wrong, you know?
Yeah, I think that's, those are kind of questions. So, that will begin a discussion back and forth.
Right.
I think Skype, or doing no videos, probably a good idea.
When do we want to try to do it? Be sure to the questions.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, like, I mean, frankly, today's a Monday, so can we come back to everybody with the answers by next Monday? I don't know, I don't know if it's possible, but...
Next Monday's Memorial Day.
Okay, never mind, next Tuesday. I don't know, I don't know if it's possible.
I think that's probably tough, to, to be able to do this in a week.
You do?
Do you think we could have a schedule for next week?
We could have a schedule, but I don't think we could come back with the answers till next week. I mean, that's on a holiday, that's a lot of coordination for us.
We're, okay, so, there's only, we're only calling two places.
Two?
We're, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's not true, never mind.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, we haven't decided, we haven't decided who we want to call.
I mean, I think, I think we could call two for each and that wouldn't be that bad. Ask them three or four questions. Then I can bring them, three or four.
Okay.
For speed sense, could we get, I guess some community of two people, but we don't have one, we don't have the, and, and just get them to, those two people who don't have to coordinate their schedule and make the call, rather than the five of us trying to coordinate this and have to get a room and everything else?
I'd like to do this quickly.
Yeah, just logistics, we get two people.
The everything's free.
Sorry, what was it?
May twenty-third, everybody's calendars were free. I don't know if they filled up, if they were considering, that was the original thing of this.
That's Wednesday, no, that's, I have to be, I have to be...
Yeah, but we don't need everybody.
You only need two people.
So, who wants to do this?
I've retired. I can do this.
That's fair enough.
I, I would love to do it, but because I have to work in Utica, it makes that more difficult. So, I'm very willing to step aside on one of you who's more local, that may be able to come up with the time during the day to do this, start doing it. To me, it's the two, two people, find a time that you guys can do it and get the questions done and then report back, that's going to be fine.
Okay. I'm happy to, to ask questions on the phone, but I'm okay if somebody else wants to do it.
Well, probably, I mean, that sounds, if you, if you two would like to do it, are you guys okay with that? It's not like it's busy and gone all day and say.
So, you guys figure out scheduling wise, coordinating the schools, right?
Do that next Monday.
I think that's the fastest, most efficient way to get it done.
So, we'll ask, why did you choose to use the one company?
Well, a private company versus Bosse's.
That's what I did, private, or exposed. Do you feel it added value and in what ways? And what costs were above the fifteen K base and what were they for?
And, and I would say, do you feel there are any negatives? What negative? Before you ask about the cost, you know, do you feel there are any negatives and so what?
And, because I feel like if you guys get that from, you know, a few of these schools, that gives us, to me, gives us a much broader sense of understanding and help to figure out the difference between the two systems are. And then we can make a much more relative decision on what, which way we want to go.
Do we need to then have a meeting to come back and talk about it?
Yep, you need a special meeting.
This is the board's business, but I want to ask one question.
Yeah.
Would it be helpful to the board to know when this search was conducted? Whether it was done five years ago, four years ago?
The dates are on here.
Oh, they are on there.
Yeah.
Only so you know.
A year isn't that? Yeah, and they're all like two six, twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen seventeen, twenty sixteen seventeen, and sometimes fifteen sixteen, and they're all...
Okay, all right.
Relatively...
I can't find this list, I don't know what's up with that or whatever.
And it would be helpful to know who they hired in the end? Not necessarily in name, but did they hire somebody from Western New York or did they hire somebody from Central New York?
Where they came from?
Did they hire somebody internally or from a Toronto district? Might that just give a sense? I don't know.
Great question.
Just a thought. Give a sense of, I heard somebody from a local school district, I want to have a sense of... Just get a sense of how far and wide that the result would change and our value.
No, please.
No, but your, your business, your hiring of a superintendent. But those experiences, that's a thought I have, who did you wind up finally? Where'd that person come from? That's just me, you know? If that helps.
So, then we'll have to set, once you guys get this scheduled, then we'll have to do a call and...
Do it on a Friday.
Stick my nose in it again.
Yeah.
It's our regular meeting.
June fourteen.
I was concerned we want to try to...
And what, what night of the week works for all of you, because I know every time we've had a conversation?
Not Tuesday.
Not Tuesday. Mondays or Wednesdays?
Wednesdays are generally good, that twenty-third is the oddity for me.
So, how's the first week of June, which I think is like the week of June fourth?
Yeah.
June sixth is the one.
June sixth is out, because that's the banquet.
Sports awards banquet.
You got all kinds of stuff.
June fourth.
June fourth.
I am not here on June fourth, neither is Debbie, but that's okay.
And we could do June fifth, which coincides with the FFA.
That's Tuesday, it runs into, ran into...
Oh, runs into you.
Is there, is there harm in waiting until the fourteenth?
Your interment, that was, that was a joke.
I mean, what, you know, that way the pressure's not on and you can do it.
The fourteenth is going to be a, it's going to be a long...
A long meeting, because it's the House of Representatives, you're right.
I think we're better off to have a special meeting the week before.
How's the seventh?
So, we can discuss everything that we come up with.
I can't do the seventh.
You can't do Thursday, it's not...
I can do the fourth. So, Debbie can't and you can't?
I will, yeah.
The man's not here either, so you have no...
Of course, I'm here.
Minutes.
And myself, yeah.
We can't take the minutes?
Unless we, you can't do anything during the day, right, Ellen, on the days that you're...
Wednesday, I have the flexibility to do something during the day.
I'm looking at Paul and at respect for you, Michelle, could you do a Wednesday, like the sixth earlier in the day before?
If you have notice ahead, I could do it.
Do something before the fifteenth?
Um, it's not a Friday, but...
The sports banquet.
A sports banquet.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
I, I appreciate it.
I don't speak at the FFA, so...
So, June sixth?
And let's say what time is, what time's the banquet, or the...
Six.
The banquet's at the sixth.
What if we did four or four thirty?
March.
You're going to take, you're going to take an hour?
No.
That's what I think, it's four. You go, won't take an hour?
I think we just schedule it.
We're all asking five questions.
So, four thirty or five?
Five. I mean, make it as, make it as late as possible for people who have to get back here.
Oh, and you saw her in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, special meeting.
June sixth, whichever word is six. What time did you guys decide?
Five.
Five.
And he puts it at six, right?
Yep.
Want me here?
Who's this?
Appreciate that.
The next is pretty... Okay. Any other discussion on that? We're going to scale that and move forward as we recommend. Any recommendations, let's see, any motions approved, Harry Jarko to a strategic plan implementation team as recommended by a superintendent?
To move?
I'll say it. Debbie's going to say it.
I'm sorry, I was working discussion.
Well, here's, here's a question I have, and it's, I paused last time, Harry brought up at the last meeting. Because, you know, when we did the strategic plan, I was probably the one most outspoken that my experience with strategic plans is the chief executive officers and board should stay out of a strategic plan, that they do the work without influence from us, that they have clear eyes. What I'm not sure of, so I need help with this, is in higher ed, when I've done strategic plans, we haven't had an implementation team. So, I'm trying to get my head around, does that theory still hold true for an implementation team? What is their functioning purpose? What do they do as, as opposed to what the strategic plan creation was? My gut feeling, and it could just be from years of doing strategic plans and their setting, is that we should stay out of it. But I don't know if the differences of implementation team is really making those recommendations happen, so maybe it's appropriate over there, I just don't know. I'm not sure what that implementation team does.
Well, I'm not sure of what Harry's role would be there. So, is he there as more of a silent factor to bring stuff back to the board, to answer? Like, I, I just don't know what his role would be, to answer questions, to be a full-time participant, I'm not sure.
It sounds to me like he is observing and you're, you know, you're not acting as a board member, you're not, you're not a, you're not speaking on behalf of the board, you're not...
What, when you ask this question, is he acting as a board member?
I, I see him as a community member.
Yes.
I see him as a member of the community, you know, participating on the, I don't see him as a liaison of the board, that's me. I, I, you know, if you want to do this, you know, we'll give you a choice of which group you want to work with, you want to work on meeting goals of technology, you want to help the group with academic standards and implementation, the community, the fact there are four succinct groups.
If that's the case.
And each of them has been working thus far, Travis, you were there today, and our goal is to try to have those small groups.
Yeah, because if you're going to be on, yeah, the, the way it's set up right now, correct me if I'm wrong, it's looking like the whole group of four separate...
Right, there are about twenty people.
Are going to meet once more this year, September, January, September, Jan.
Yeah.
So, maybe you could like sync up with whoever kind of like oversight, like checking with all the different committees as you go.
Or, or actually participate in one of the teams.
Yeah.
That's what I say, so I don't see it as being a separate work.
But I see, that most comments right there is where I think it becomes problematic. And so, let me just play that one.
Yeah, I didn't want an oversight role.
That, that when we start saying, well, if you want to start, then, then the board members being treated a different way.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, again, I'm not sure on this implementation team, I'm not really And, and I don't, again, I'm not sure on this implementation team. I'm not really clear what the implementation team does. But the process of, of the actual strategic plan, of having outside people look at your system, evaluating you, has the greatest value when it's outsiders, not someone, there was one of my greatest concerns with the strategic plan that you know, no matter how many times we as a board said that the superintendent should not be directly involved in it, he should be asked questions, he should, but he shouldn't be directing it. And we turned it around, um, that was there. I think that's a concern. But I'm not going as far as saying that's inappropriate for the implementation team because I'm just not as clear on what their role is. I can give, let me just play this part out. If what they're saying is.
Trying to answer.
If what they're saying is the strategic plan has created the recommendations, they're not changing. They're just looking at how do you implement it, but I don't have a problem.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
That we're implementing the objectives to meet the goals of the plan. Quick example, um, let me just speak to the technology group if I may for a moment. I've heard them actually speaking as a group of five people, three or four people. And this is where I would see the role here is whichever group you and I. But I literally heard them talking about, I think we ought to do what I find it. Think we ought to do one point one first, which is assessing blah, 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 blah. I think we ought to do one point two next, and that's faculty and staff. But I actually heard the groups talking about the steps to implement the plan. That's what I heard from technology. Now Travis, which group were you with?
So I'm on like.
Faculty, faculty and staff.
My suggestion would be, we have these separate groups. Every group has an administrator who is kind of that means the head of each group. So maybe the best thing to do is do whatever you do, but because you have the flexibility of daytime, schedule a meeting for each administrator to see how that specific rule is progressive.
No, Travis, I disagree. No, I do not see that as Harry's role. I see Harry as participating on a team just the way you are or not participating at all.
Look, then here's.
That's why I want Travis to be honest with you.
So this is where I play those.
So I know everyone.
Let's say he's on the technology implementation team, okay? And they come up with their series of things that they want to do based on what the strategic plan came up with. Fine. And it's going to cost X amount of dollars. Now a voting member decide whether that group gets that one.
No, that's super. No.
Aren't we voting on what happens with the?
No.
No, but we.
No, we got the right resources. They're going to screen them. Obviously, you passed the budget.
Okay.
But we've had that talk, right? I mean, one of the groups is looking for an enrichment coordinator, and somebody else is looking for a tech teacher. Another group is looking for something else. And again, I'm not participating with any of the four groups, but Dan and I, or come, Dan's a valid technology member. I'm sitting back thinking, okay, if this group is going to implement and it's going to take resources, then administrator, we got to either decide to provide the resources or not. I'll give you an example. As an enrichment coordinator, okay, everybody's saying, well, we got to go out and hire somebody. No. No, we made the people on staff that will step up and instead of teaching the class, be the coordinator for that. I mean, if we can afford to. No, I'm not looking at it. But that's, I think, my job, that part of it. So I see Harry in a role as any of you who wanted to be, to literally being a part of a group to implement the plan. I, I was not looking to put any kind of board member because I think that gets messy. That's my headache. And if I mess up the implementation, if I lose, if all the teams stop coming around, then I've done a very good job of that. But what I see so far, Travis, is the two meetings, that people are really very seriously working together. Trying to achieve the most objectives and goals.
They work well. You just need to figure out if you want an oversight person or an active person. That's what you need to do.
No, I, no, it would be active. For me, I thought.
I was saying, he was a board.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want oversight person either. That wasn't.
See, as I, as I understood it, or as I envisioned it, we just didn't want to be, we wanted to be as closely connected and, and understanding what's going on with the strategic plan. At, uh, because, well, we, we just don't want it to be, to be any distance between us and the implementation. If that's happening through the superintendent, I'm, I'm completely comfortable with, with that. I just, I just, I just. We, we know it's what, 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 what we're, what we're fighting. We're, I mean, it's the flip side of transparency. It's do we really understand what the community wants? And one way of better understanding what the community wants is to be on the implementation team. If, if, if that is going to happen through the superintendent, then I'm okay with that. Um, then it just becomes a matter of whether I want to be, as a member of this community, Hamilton plus HCS, I want to be part of, like everybody else is already on the committee, pitching in.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm really happy to do that part of it.
So I have another.
Now, how he might be perceived, I understand Paul, but I think that's part of my responsibility.
Yeah, Paul's, Paul's concern.
Yeah.
Uh, of skewing the process, um, is, is a legitimate concern. And I'm, I'm comfortable if, if we don't want to go that route um, because of the notion that all of us are created equal, but some of us are more equal than others.
And that's part of it. And again, I'm trying to work with administrators who know if I'm succeeding, and I will keep working with them to allow the community members or the teachers, who's ever had to take some leadership role there. The administrators, I keep trying to say, you don't have to run these subcommittees. You're not responsible for that. Participate as one. You're the only ones who can bring in resources to bear. Because the rest of the community and the teachers don't have access to money. They don't have access to money. So that's where, that's why I, you know, I'm there to see what resources I can bring. I like, you know, we have Jeffrey, Chris, and Kevin and Bill. They bring their resources, but I don't want to see the administrators down there. You know, you have a really good personality. My role would be, my role would be that you would participate as an equal with others. Remember, this is how you're perceived.
My other.
So that's, that's how I see it.
Point to this is come July Y, we have another board member who is already a member of the implementation team, if I'm not mistaken, yes?
No.
Oh, you're not? Oh, I thought you were. You were part of the strategic planning.
Planning, yes. Corey's not serving.
Correct. I just wasn't sure how that played into whatever we were going to decide.
Something I missed that we wanted was, we wanted to get a report due, you know, I would.
Well, that's what I was beginning to say. I mean, we, we are interested and invested, and I know at some point, one of the community members sort of said, I don't think it was you. I think somebody else said, you know, it would be nice to have the board on the committees or at the committees or whatever, so that they're involved and invested. But again, it's this very messy thing of when we're there, it does affect the dynamic. Because even though when I walk in the building, I think I'm TJ and Sam's parent.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody else in the building perceives me that way, and I don't get that. Like, I don't see that and I don't get that. So when I'm sitting on this committee, I'm not going to see that, get that. Do you know what I mean?
People have a hard time understanding that individually, you do not represent the board.
Right.
But common perception, that's the case.
Yes, yep.
But I also know this as superintendent, should Michelle come and talk to me and visit me? I know she's an individual board member, but I also know she's a board.
You're also a superintendent and you have knowledge of the school.
I understand. But my point being, just what Ellen said, if Ellen came into my office to talk about her children, I know I'm talking to a board member as well as a parent. That's what I'm saying. But I also know Ellen knows no special powers alone, but I know she's a board member. I don't have to forget.
I think, but I think, I think what I would ask is that we schedule at the board meetings at least quarterly updates from each thing so that, that it's very, because we want to know. We are interested and we are invested.
My quick suggestion, put it up to a whole strategic implementation team, how they could perceive a board member best helping them.
It's up to Eric, and if you want to survey, as long as the role is to participate with others, that's how I see them. Uh, how you're perceived, I mean, can't control.
Can't control.
I can't control other people.
Now, you know, probably what the way we're describing it is about, in a way, is, I mean, my concern again was the sense of a, a gap between the people controlling the finances and controlling the final decisions and the people creating the end.
Again, that was great to view, but to me, that's. If we're not prepared to somehow figure out resources that will meet certain of these objectives and goals, we're going to get clobbered. We have a community that has spoken. We value this. We value that. We want this to happen. We want technology to go on a cycle for replacement. We want inventories. If we don't do that as a district, we're dropping anyway. But however you want to handle it.
Well, I think that, I mean, we have, we have a board member on the elementary history committee. We have on the secondary history committee, and we have Emerald Foundation. Like, we have board members on these. And our, again, our role is not to be the board member on, I mean, we're an acting participant in this meeting.
I see those, those communities meeting.
We're a little different.
Goodness.
As long as there's a clear expectation of what the board member's responsibility would be.
And what it is.
And what it is.
Right, she's not going out as a board member. She's going out as a community member. That is what, that is what we're looking at. Like, we as Harry Jarko, like, citizen who'd like to just take on the board on the.
Why would it be them?
We had to vote everybody else.
You do everyone else's vote.
We had to go to create.
Yeah, Travis was a.
We had to. Yeah, we, we did lists of names, and so a little less, yes, we did two lists of names.
So that's different.
Which also means that any other community member that comes in now and says, hey, you know what, I'd like to be involved in a committee, we need to be open to, which I'm fine with.
And get board.
Right.
What was Terry's role on the actual?
Well, that's what I was just going to say. We approved her as a, as a.
But I don't think she was like a voting member or anything. She was, was she a community member or was she a board member?
Terry? Uh.
Was she on the planning?
She was on the planning.
You asked a question. Yeah, she just worked like anybody else.
She, yeah, she was just a, she was on, she was in the work groups. She was on the work teams.
She had told me she wasn't a voting member. If anything.
I think she may have removed herself. Yeah, she may have. She may have done that. I don't know particularly what she did, but I do know that she was on particular work groups and teams.
And the process where I gauge her thus far is not required voting. Did I? We're trying to work together to make this happen for the person.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table. So you want to be a community member?
Yeah, sure. But I'm, I mean, I'll stand from the vote.
Care which?
Yes, I'm interested.
Okay. We don't have a resident, we just say, yes, he's good. All right, so there's a motion on the table to approve Harry Jarko's strategic plan implementation team as recommended by the superintendent. We have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
And what, what I'm saying? Okay, um, motion to approve, throw up three point one, motion to approve the appointment of Celia Markethke as a probationary elementary teacher effective September first, two thousand eighteen through two thousand, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at step one of the salary schedule. Contingent upon meeting all certification criteria as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
Oh, ooh, awesome.
Any further discussion?
Um, can you just read the last part of that again?
Contingent upon meeting all certification criteria as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
Okay, just.
Did we have?
That was my only discussion voice. Yes.
Was there a deadline by which she, all that had to be?
September first, but we expect it within six or eight weeks after graduation, so.
She just graduated last week.
Yeah, I know.
They're contingent upon by September.
She's not certified. She will not, we will rescind you.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and they actually, because you're making effective September first, so that becomes a deadline.
Right. But I would like to see this well before that. Okay. Sorry. I don't fool with stuff. We need her certified.
Nope, you're good.
And we, at my word, that she's not going to step into a classroom uncertified. I'm not going to let that happen.
Great. That was my, that was it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four point one, superintendent's update.
Okay, quickly, and I just want to point, you know, this out because it's a public meeting. At our last board meeting, um, we had gotten a question about, was it legal to require voters whom we did not know to provide us a proof of residency? Generally, you know, we were presented with a driver's license and a few times we had a utility bill. I posed this to the attending's at exposies, and they did considerable research.
Can you pose this?
To, I posed it to Andy Lamont, and Andy researched and George Muege back to me. And not only did they say that generally in districts without personal registration, which is our district, we don't do personal registering, like Hamilton, education law authorizes, not requires, but authorizes us to require voters to provide a formal proof of residency. So we were within, we were in. And determined by the school district, we sent driver's licenses. Uh, I could read all the words to you. Basically, we were legal, on a good legal footing. I wanted to maintain and uphold the integrity of this election. I thought it was prudent to do this. I will take responsibility for this. We were legally within our rights. We had three different places that asked questions. We responded to everyone who's asked us questions. I think the thing that, that kind of got some people concerned was we had never done this before, and, and I think it caught them by surprise. Uh, now, what's going to happen in the future? We made no promises. So we haven't promised we're going to go longer the other next year, but what I would suggest is if we are going to put it out there, that we may ask for identification. We want to get that out front.
Is it, is it true that we've never done it before?
We've never done it before.
Because I thought I remember the people in the past presenting utility bills and things like that.
Okay, um, if they were like questioned where they lived and they said they just moved into the area, then we would take them aside and say, okay, you need to show us proof. But that was very limited. I mean, it wasn't like this vote.
We had a huge turnout. We didn't know everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I sat over there all day and there was a huge amount of people that I never seen before. So it's like.
And you were a taxpayer.
Yeah.
And there was an implication that we were allowing our friends to vote without ID, whether.
I don't think, I don't think.
They were people we knew. It had nothing to do with friends. People we knew, and we knew they were residents. So.
Yeah, the big difference of that is in the general election, you personally register. You're signing an affidavit. That what you said you said that before in your registration process is true. That's not the case.
No, all you're doing here is signing in basically.
Exactly.
And if, like, what's the other piece, Debbie? If something does go crooked, then you're taking a side, then you sign an affidavit, and your vote goes into an envelope until it can be proven. But what we were concerned about is if somebody, I'm not saying anybody would do this on purpose. If someone did, wasn't a resident, thought they were, or thought it's a taxpayer, they could vote even though they weren't a resident, voted and went through the regular system. There's no way to validate. There's no way to go back. So we, we did a bit of the best of our ability. We believe we had an honest election. We believe that, um, based on our prudence, I'm going to use that word, and honoring our responsibility, that residents vote and.
How many people voted last year?
Four hundred.
Three hundred and.
Not quite four.
Yeah, three hundred and seven, eighty now.
This was six hundred.
Six, six, ten or eleven, yeah. So it was significantly, it was, was that fifty percent more, third more, I don't remember which year again. But it was significant more, it was two hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred something.
So we're staying to the American standards, not visiting.
I think that.
Okay, thank you for listening to me. Well, that's a tough one. It's very legal.
Good question, Debbie.
I actually got the analysis of, we basically want to see of the budget of the bus votes. So if you.
Hello. So the bus vote this year, seventy-eight percent yes, seven years past, seventy-nine, seventy-five, fifty-six, seventy-five, seventy-six. The frequency is the bus vote, eighty-seven percent yes, years past, eighty-five, eighty-six, ninety, eighty-four, eighty-three, eighty-seven, eighty-two. Oh, yeah.
Very simple.
That's a sound.
Very simple. So appreciate the community coming out and voting.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, where we should discuss matters regarding employer history of particular employees.
And I will not be asking for any action again after executive session is a information to.
Any motions?
A move.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye. You in favor?
Aye. Thank you for coming, guys. Two minutes.
You want me to stay here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just, we're going to shut that up.
Yeah.